Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of September 22, 2022. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your help.
Good job.
Well done.
We've done it twice today.
Okay, we're going to start the meeting with public comments. The public may speak on any of the listed agenda items. Please remembering that we want to hear specifically about your child and your child's experiences in our school. Anybody have anything? No? Okay, then I'd like to move to the consent agenda.
Resolving the recommendations superintendent schools approved consented new documents two through eight as presented to the board of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Tonight's agenda includes approval of this and previous the approval of CSC CPS placements and updated 2022 substitute U.S. some amending and approval of additional work hours staff members that include both SCAP presentations and work associated with the superintendent's conference, new teacher orientation, and also points of high school retention staff members. We're including school monitors for subsequent positions throughout the 2022-23 school year. We're then even having a site listing for 2022-23, which is adjusting the sites on one club, eliminating one of the high school clubs and changing the advisors of another club this whole year. We're appointing a policy committee for 2022-23 that will coordinate the support in the central area and administrators, Dr. Garty, Assistant Estrella, Slade, and Dr. Lo.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. We are going to start presentations. You want me to do the first one?
We would like to invite up Alan Cassay and Colleen Harris from O'Connor Davies to give our order report. Thank you. Welcome.
That microphone's probably not on, right? We all have to guess what Maureen said before.
Good evening. Chris Cough, your engagement partner, was needed to be here tonight, so I'm filling in for him. Earlier this evening, Colleen and I met with the audit committee and we went over the financial statements in detail. What I'm going to do now is give you a summation of what we discussed in the audit committee. Okay? How does this? Oh, it's not by page. Okay. So tonight's agenda is listed in front of you. Overview of the required communications, the 2022 general fund revenues and expenditures, budget compared to actual, the 2022 major revenues, a five-year revenue history, the major expenditures for 2022, again, a five-year expenditure history, a five-year fund balance analysis for the general fund, other fund balance analysis, and debt service. So here are some of the required communications, and this is management's responsibility, selecting and implementing appropriate accounting policies, fairly presenting the financial statements in accordance with U.S. GAAP generally accepted accounting principles, establishing and maintaining an effective internal control over financial reporting. The district has to be in compliance with all laws, regulations, provisions, contracts, agreements, providing all financial records and related information to the auditors, which they did, and setting the proper tone at the top. And our responsibilities include certain deliverables, the independent auditor's report. We issued the, we will be issuing the report. It has an unmodified opinion, which is known as a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you could receive. We're also issuing an extra classroom activities report, the required communications to those charges, the governance, that would be the board, and the management letter, we went over that. There were a few control deficiencies. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Had we discovered any fraud or illegal acts, they would have been communicated to the board. We encountered no difficulties during the audit. It went very smoothly. There were no uncorrected statements in the audit, and there were no disagreements with management. Overall, the audit went very well. This is a summation of the general fund budget. On the left-hand side, you have your revenues, expenditures. Going across left to right, you have the original budget, the final budget, the actual results, encumbrances, which are not applicable to revenues, and then the variance with the final budget. So for your revenues, your original and final budget were the same, $50,896,000. The actual came in at $51,654,000, generating a positive budgetary variance of $758,000. On the expenditure side, the original budget and final budget again were the same amounts, $52,615,000, and the actual results came in at $49,455,000. And then there were encumbrances, which are purchase orders, which were issued at the end of the year, for which you hadn't received the goods and services as of June 30th. So that money is encumbered. It will roll forward into your 2023 budget. So that leaves you with a positive budgetary variance of almost $2 million, $1,990. So the excess deficiency over revenues in the actual column was $2.2 million. The other financing sources, which include transfers in, transfers out for the most part. You had $1 million in the original budget. The money was not transferred in. It was not needed. The other financing uses were transfers out of $1,680,000, and that was to the capital projects fund to pay off your bond anticipation note and to the special aid fund to pay off your 20% of the summer handicap program. And then the net change in fund balance in the actual column was $1,130,000. Added to the fund balance at the beginning of the year of $12,485,000, you ended the year with a total fund balance of $13,615,000. Here we have some of the major revenues of the district. These revenues account for about 93% of your total revenues. You have your real property taxes, which had a negative variance of $86,000, and that was because certain tax sursheraries were paid off during the year. And if it's a sursherary against the current year that we're in, 2122, it goes directly against the revenue. If it's a prior year, it's recorded as an expenditure. Your non-property taxes, which you did not budget for, is $124,000. The use of money in property, you had a negative $133,000 because some of the investments were with U.S. Treasuries, and because it was an 18-month security, you have to show the value at the end of the 12 months, which is June 30th, and there was a drop in the value, but it is guaranteed, and you will get your full amount invested back. So this is just for reporting purposes. Your state aid came in with a positive variance of $523,000. The miscellaneous revenue had a positive variance of $363,000, and the other financing sources came in short of $1 million, which was a transfer which was not needed. I just wanted to go back to the state aid for one minute. There was an issue that was brought to our attention having to do with certain class hours within the district. I believe it's the 11th and 12th grade. Their hours are not in accordance with state guidelines, and what that means is if it stays as it is now, the district will possibly be penalized. A waiver was submitted to bypass it during COVID. It was acceptable because of the circumstances. If the waiver is not granted, then the district has the potential to lose approximately $27,000 in state aid. It's a very complex formula that is calculated. I'm sure the state will calculate it for you. I know Jill has done it herself, based upon the shortfall in the hours of the teachers have currently in terms of being in front of the students. My understanding is that they are in the district, but their time in front of the students is short, about 4.3 days for the entire year. I just wanted to point that out, and something that the board should be aware of if you're not already aware of it. Then there were some other revenues, miscellaneous revenues of $3.4 million. That was composed primarily of refund the prior years and refund the prior BOSI's expenditures. So your total revenues came in as $51,654,000, which accounts for 93% of your total revenues. These are just some of the major revenues. Here is a five-year revenue history. If you look from left to right, you'll see that the property taxes have not increased significantly in the past five years. Most of your revenues have went from $42 million to $48 million, so it's fairly consistent year to year. I mean, last year went from, as I said, it was like a $137,000 increase, which was less than three tenths of a percent. Here's a listing of some of the major expenditures that you incurred in 2022. You had the general support. Some of the larger variances, and the general support was $430,000. Each one of these categories has more detail in the financial statement because each category has several components to it and several account codes and functions that get rolled up into these amounts. Teaching regular school had a positive variance of $320,000. Programs for students with disabilities, $425,000. Overall, your major revenues came in at $45,602, and there were some other additional expenditures, debt service and others that were not listed as major, $4.9 million. So these total expenditures add up to $50,524,000, and they account for about 90% of your And here we have a five-year expenditure history. Again, if you look across the bottom, you'll see that in 2021, your total expenditures were $44.7 million. In 2022, they were $45.6 million. Again, the increase was a little over $100,003/1%. So basically, the district is very stable. And here is a five-year general fund balance analysis. You have various, what we call buckets of fund balance. You have the non-spendable fund balance, which are prepaid expenditures. Those are expenditures that were paid at the end of June 2022 that applied to 2223. So that money is non-spendable. You have your restricted, which are reserves that were either established by the board or legal reserves. Some of the major reserves, the reserve for tax sursherari, your reserve for the subsequent year, for the employee benefit accrued liability, those are the compensated absences that all your employees earn of $1.3 million. You have the employee's retirement system of $1.8 million. I believe it was two years ago, the state allowed you to reserve for the teacher's retirement system, which you did to the tune of $1.6 million, and you've also put away $2.3 million for future capital projects. Below that, you have your assigned fund balance, which are the encumbrances, which I mentioned, of $1.9 million. And then you have your unassigned fund balance of almost $2.1 million, which equals 3.7% of the 2223 budget, which is slightly below the statutory limit of 4%. State law does not allow you to have an unassigned fund balance greater than 4% of your subsequent year's budget, so you're within those guidelines. The total fund balance is $13,615,000, and that is 24% of the subsequent year's budget. There's no limitation on that, the total fund balance. We just wanted you to know what the percentages were. These are the other funds and the other fund balances. You have your debt service fund, the special aid fund, the capital projects fund, the school lunch fund, and the special purpose fund. So the fund balance at the beginning of the year, if you add them up, because of the capital projects fund, had a deficit of $12,222,000. The total funds was negative $8,332,000. The reason for the capital projects fund being in a deficit, instead of issuing a serial bond, you issued bond anticipation notes, which is short-term debt, and every year when they get paid off, the money comes into the capital projects fund as revenue. So when that $12 million, $13 million of bands are paid off, the deficit will be eliminated. So all your other funds are in a positive fund balance. The debt service is $3.8 million, and that money is restricted by law. It could only be used to pay down debt, existing debt. The special aid fund historically should not have a fund balance. As we discussed, the capital projects fund, the $13 million deficit. The school lunch fund has a fund balance of $386,000, and the special purpose fund, which are basically your trust and the extra classroom activity funds are in that as well of $208,000. So your total funds have a deficit of $8,547,000, but if you eliminate the capital projects fund, it's about $450,000, $460,000. Here's a summary of your outstanding debt. You have refunding bonds outstanding, the original issue amount of $9.5 million. Every year, you pay them off, and you can see from the chart below you, the five-year payoff history. We call it a five-year because we show five years individually, and then we aggregate everything, the remaining balance. So your bonds outstanding at the end of June were $3,884,000. You had an energy performance contract, which has a remaining balance of $5,364,000, and they'll both be paid off by 20, the bonds by 2032 and the contract by 2033. And that's it. Are there any questions? Overall, the audit went very well. As I mentioned, there were a few minor deficiencies, nothing of a material nature. I believe the board has received the letter and listed them all, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
No, and thank you. I know this is so small, and so people that are watching, is this going to be on our, like, will be able, people be able to see this up close? Jill?
Yep, it'll all be on our website, under the financial section of the website. These are all listed there for a number of years. Yep.
Okay. And just to repeat, because I asked at the meeting too, that this was, he calls it an unmodified opinion, which is also called a clean opinion, which is the best
Correct.
you can receive.
The best opinion you could receive.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Go ahead.
I did with two, our order to, the country's facing, you know, if you follow the news at all, a recession that will probably hit us pretty potently in 2023. What can this district do to prepare for that? I see our fund balance is rather high, so putting more money in that, I think the state would scream and yell, as would our residents, understandably so.
Right.
But there's got to be something for districts to prepare for that downturn that's coming up.
Well, when I tell every client, whether it's a school district, a county, a city, village, or town, and I believe this just, I'm not the engagement partner, so I don't have the history that Chris does, but my understanding is that when you prepare your budget, your revenue budget, you do it very conservatively, as you can see in your state aid. Aside from the issue, it's always been done conservatively, and that's what you have, that's what you can do. Continue to do that because aside from the property taxes, you basically have no control over your revenues that come in.
Right.
State aid, years ago, they were holding it back. There was a 20% holdback, and then it was released. The interest earnings, the sales tax, any revenue that you receive is not guaranteed, so to speak. However, on your expenditure side of the budget, that's where you have control. You can make decisions as to what to spend the money on and what not to. So whenever there's a crisis and a shortfall, that's where the savings will basically come from, is the expenditure side of the budget. Thank you. You're welcome.
Jeanette or Helen, any questions for? Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
I just, before we go forward, could I just, I just want to take a minute. I know they're probably going to be leaving. I want to say thank you to the external audit team. I want to say thank you to Agada Zimsky, our treasurer, and the entire business office staff for, you know, their dedication and hard work that goes into everything that they do in our office. I think it's really important to make mention of that. It was a successful audit, and I appreciate everything they do.
Thank you. I have some questions. So before we move on, I thought we would take comments from the audit committee representative on the external auditors report. So Tom Sawyer was re-elected chairperson of the audit committee. So do you have comments for us?
Re-elected.
Yes, thank you. It's an honor and a privilege. I just want to say thank you to the business office. The audit committee has reviewed all of the findings from the, from O'Connor Davies, and we don't see any, any issues or objections to their findings, and it's the recommendation of the audit committee that the board accept their findings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, so backing up, I listened to what the auditor had to say about the potential loss of state aid. So I'm curious as to why this is surfacing this year and not before.
I suspect that's for me.
I would suspect. We could throw it to Jill, but I think you'd do better.
So although the high school schedule has not changed in several years, we've previously reported to the state grades nine through 12 collectively. So rather than separating our grades based upon instructional hours, we've reported the instructional hours for ninth and 10th grade for the entire building, one with hopes of addressing the deficiency in 11th and 12th grade over the course of that time. It was more recently brought to our attention, and I think it's number 20 in the state FAQ document, that clearly outlines that if different grades have differences in instructional hours within the same building, that they must be reported separately. So that's actually the case in both our middle school and our high school. So rather than reporting one middle school calendar of days, we report a 5, 6, and a 7, 8. And at the high school, rather than reporting one building level, we do 9, 10, and 11, 12. And the discrepancy between the two is the fact that ninth and 10th graders have an academic study during the community lunch, which is about 15 minutes, and the 11th and 12th grade students do not have access to that same academic study. So that's what creates the deficiency, and it's the state guidance that clearly articulates that we must report discrepancies separately to the state.
Okay, so, so the loss of state aid is part of it, but the loss of student-teacher contact time is also, as Seattle brought that up at our audit committee meeting, is also significant. I mean...
Sure, there's certainly an academic and a financial impact. I think the more time students are in front of teachers, there's, well researched, that time in front of teacher is the greatest predictor of student success, and I think any time, any additional time we can find to have our students in front of our teachers would greatly benefit the individual students, as well as obviously protect the revenue sources that the district relies on each year.
What I'm hearing is that we're not in compliance with what state ed wants, needs our numbers to be. That's what I hear.
That is correct. We are deficient in the required number of hours of instruction specifically for 11th and 12th grade students.
So I guess the natural question then is, what are we doing about that?
So this is something that obviously has been ongoing conversations with the union, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to reach a compromise which will afford students the ability to meet those instructional hour requirements as outlined by New York State, and we'll put the district in a place where we're not in risk of losing state aid that we, that we desperately count on as a revenue source. But I, with everything, it has to be collectively bargained. It's not something where we can impose upon them.
Do we know yet, with that being stated, what a possible solution would look like?
Without getting into the details of what's being discussed, there's certainly several options that have been considered and discussed with the teachers' union in order to guarantee that all students have access to the minimum number of instructional hours. So there's more than one option that's been discussed. I don't want to necessarily share what each individual one is, but certainly a couple are out there on the table with the notion, obviously, we want to be a little bit above what the minimum number of hours are. There are certain delays or three-hour delays, or early dismissals, or half-days, all sort of take away from those hours. We want to make sure we have a little bit of a cushion so we're protected no matter what happens throughout the school year.
And to confirm, elementary, middle, ninth, and 10th are not impacted. It's only 11th and 12th grades.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Lo? All right, so we're going to have the pleasure of talking about the opening of the elementary school this year.
So I would like to invite up Dr. Podesta, who will introduce two very special guests in a short period of time, in case they know who they are.
I'm Margaret Podesta, principal of the elementary school, and I am here to talk about the opening of school this year for the 2022-23 school year. I also have some guest speakers who I'll be inviting up really soon so that they can call it a night and get ready for tomorrow. I would like to say from the beginning that the opening of school at the elementary building has been extremely smooth and positive, and I'm thankful to our amazing faculty and staff who work so hard every single day, and as you'll see in this presentation, even through the summer, to prepare for our students. My amazing assistant principal unfortunately is under the weather this evening and wanted to be here for this presentation. I'm sure she's watching, but Mrs. Jen Pico joined us just about a year ago. I think she was hired at this time and hadn't started in the building yet, but she and I are really working closely together every day. She is an amazing building leader with me, and she brings lots of experience, so it's just been a pleasure working with Jen Pico since last October. So what we're going to do as we talk about the opening of schools this year is look back quickly at last year. And last year, as you know, was one of the most challenging years because I think we didn't expect it to be as challenging as it was. But in this picture, you'll see some of our 4th graders last year who were dressed up for their colonial day and their research presentations. And as you know, 4th grade is a very special year at the elementary school because as of now, there are oldest children in the school, so they are our seniors. And I happen to have a couple of 4th graders who volunteered very willingly to be public speakers tonight. They serve a special role also. They are part of the safety patrol, which They are part of the Safety Patrol, which is a club at our school for fourth graders. It's a club where you have to apply and make sure you fill out your application and be qualified to be a safety patroller. And so I'd like to invite Ariani and TJ up to talk about not only safety patrol, but just being a fourth grade student at PVES. So I think TJ, you want to go first, right? And you can come up here so they can see you? Would you like, need ahold of the microphone?
Microphone.
Okay.
Good evening, anyone. My name is TJ Edwards, and I am a fourth grader, safety patroller at Putnam Valley Elementary School. I work hard to set a strong example for all of the students and to be a leader in the school. Every day I help out at buses at dismissal time so that all students walk safely to the buses. I ask students to walk carefully and tell them to have a nice day. This is an important job every day at my school to have the younger students know that we are there to help. I am a leader in our school, and I know that I am a role model. The other day I helped a kindergartner student who looked lost in the buses. I told the student who to follow. This was a big help through my elementary years. I had made, I have made so many friends every year. I have, I have a new teacher who cares about me and who helps me grow. Our fourth grade class works really hard every day, and we do lots of learning, especially in reading and math. I love to read, especially about history and fiction books. Also love, I also love sports of, sports outside of school. My favorite baseball team is the New York Yankees, and my favorite player is Aaron Judge, who just reached Babe Ruth's home run record. I can answer any questions about my job as a safety patroller, which is a club led by Ms. Keeler. It was brought to our school by Ms. Odell, sections of the Safety Patrol, who will be assigned jobs all year during the fall, winter, and spring. We are so lucky to be leaders in our school.
Thank you so much, TJ. And here is Ariani, who will introduce herself.
Hello, my name is Ariani DePello, and I am a fourth grader at Putnam Valley Elementary School. I started school and kindergarten at PVES, and I have learned so much in that school. The teachers are so caring, and we always have fun activities to do, such as dress-up days, assemblies, PV pride days, band lessons, and gym shows. We also have lots of learning. Math is my favorite subject because I really understand it. This year in fourth grade, I'm a part of the Fall Safety Patrol. As a safety patroller, I work to keep all students safe. My morning job is to help kindergarten classes each day. I help the kindergartners move into their classroom, unpack their backpacks, and get ready for the day. I also walk at the end of their line so that all the little students are safe. I love being a helper this year, and I help to set a good example. I can't believe that I'm already in fourth grade. There is so much to learn and do every day, and I'm happy to answer any questions about our elementary school.
So I think, first of all, I have to follow them, so...
Yeah, it's a tough act to follow.
Nerve-wracking. But would anyone like to ask these fourth graders any questions at all?
I'm trying to think of, I have so many. I was a, in the Safety Patrol in elementary school, and it was one of my favorite jobs. So thank you for what you do. It was very helpful.
Thank you.
What do you think about lunch?
Some lunches are good, some lunches are bad.
But not the ones your parents make for you, right? They're all good. So Ariana said you're part of the Fall Safety Patrol, so there's, there will be different students who do it in the winter and the spring, or will you be doing it all year long?
There's different seasons because Ms. Keeler wants, like, I think she wants, like, everybody to get a shot, so, and she can't have every student in one season.
Right. Well, you're kind of lucky that you got the fall. You got to be first, and you don't have to stand out there when it's snowing. So that's a good thing.
How many are there? How many Safety Patrol?
About 14 of 18.
For this season. Okay, great. Awesome.
How was, how was your training? What type of training did you get for the, for what you do?
You had to do a Rad and answer questions.
Which is an essay, yeah? Does Ms. Keeler tell you about your jobs? How to talk to students and how to keep people safe?
She says to follow the great expectations, being kind, safe, respectful, and responsible.
So I was going to embarrass TJ and ask him who his favorite basketball coach was, but, well, skip that part right now. I do want to say, compliment, I know it could be very scary to get up and talk in front of people, especially some, some people you don't know. I sometimes get a little scared too, and there's people in here, I don't know. But you guys were so extremely impressive, so mature, so well-spoken. I do want to compliment two very proud mothers sitting there in this, in the audience watching, two exceptional children, share some thoughts. So thank you both for coming here tonight. If you missed any homework or anything, just let me know. I'll write you. All right? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. And thank you to the moms. They were asked today if they were coming.
It's important that you, you take, you grab these clips so that for high school graduation, you can show them, and they'll cringe till they're, they're great.
And great job with the pledge.
Yes. So as I was saying, oh, little sister is proud. That is so sweet. And feel free to stay or whenever you're ready. Okay, thank you so much. So last year, as I was saying, was a year that we expected the COVID situation to be better, so we came into school kind of excited and cheering, and Dr. Luft asked us all as a different, as a district, to reflect, to learn, and then to thrive. So I have...
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt real fast. Is this one of our laptops or one of theirs?
That's mine.
Okay, thank you. And I want to walk away without it.
Thank you. So what we did at the elementary school is we reflected, we learned, and we really did thrive, although the conditions were challenging throughout the year. As you remember, and even by June, it was hard to remember, we started school with separate cafeterias, children could not eat snack all at once in their classrooms, we separated all of the cohorts for recess and lunch, we watched very carefully the shared learning areas in the school. And as the year went on, things changed and evolved, and sometimes we took a step backwards with, you know, health and safety conditions, and then we moved forward. But I will say, and especially compared to other schools in the area, as I know, because I have many friends in education, we really did do a great job remaining open. Our doors were open. We welcomed a new assistant principal in late October. We provided quarantine instructional support throughout the year for any students who were quarantined, and that was for ELA and math, and our teachers did an amazing job with that. School events were held. We held in-person parent conferences, a gym show, a musical, performances throughout the year, and parent workshops. We took very seriously the social-emotional wellness of our students and our staff. Our staff has been under a great amount of stress over the last few years. Management plans and practices changed as needed, and we also developed a PVES Building Steering Committee with a great group of teachers and parents, and that again has evolved now into this year with the calendar set for our new committee this year. So although it was challenging, we stayed busy, and we did well. When we talk about PV thriving, we talk about there are many important components that were in place last year and again this year. We have extremely collaborative teacher teams. Our teams plan together, learn together, and grow together, and that's what brings out the best teaching skills that you can get. We have building-focused professional learning. We, you'll hear about our teacher-initiated ELA program study, which began last year. It was teacher-driven, saying, should we look at the current programs that are out there? And I thank Jackie Levine for being a big part of that with us. We did a program review of ELA programs throughout the spring. We had consultants come to us, both in person and virtually. We looked at programs as teams, and we chose a program together. We worked closely with our wonderful PTA, and they really have just provided so many activities and wonderful celebrations for students and staff. Two book fairs were held last year, and we had to find a place where they could do that safely with all of the COVID measures. We had our PTA PVES picnic, and again this year with the bubble bus, which always brings fun. We held our community read, our first responder read aloud, our Halloween parade. We had our high school athlete walkthrough, where we had so much to celebrate last year, and just watching those elementary students cheer on a member of the community who had accomplished so much was just so touching. And of course, our senior cap and gown walk, which we have done before, not during COVID, but we surprised everyone when the seniors each escorted a kindergartner down the hallway, which was really great. And I will say, we also had our fire department in for fire safety lessons, and we just met with that volunteer fire department again this year for even enhancing that program. Our book fair provides scholastic points for our school where the PTA said, okay, you have this much money from book orders, you can order materials and furniture for your classroom, carpets for teachers who need new ones for their students, books upon books. And so we thank the PTA for providing these activities where the children of the school can benefit. Last spring, if you remember, we provided and established a reading academy. The year before, we had invited first graders in where we could see a gap due to a loss of instruction at times with the COVID situation. So last year, we were able to invite first and second graders in to an after-school program. Teachers were hired to provide this instruction in small groups after school. The children had transportation available, which of course is always a lot of organization, who's coming in, from what class, and where do they live, but our transportation department has been great with helping us with these special events. And this reading academy really gave teachers the extra time beyond the school day to look and work on designated targets for readers. So we really know that these children have been through a lot over the past couple of years with quarantines and unfortunately sickness, and yet our school stepped it up and said, you know what, we're going to provide the support and give them the boost where needed. We also have the amazing Putnam Valley Education Foundation, who helps us so much in our school, and this is just one example, this isn't a current picture, but that is the goodie bag we provide during kindergarten screening, where the children come into the school, as they did last year. They go through a series of screening stations, and then they receive a goodie bag provided completely by the Putnam Valley Education Foundation with a book, and counters, and alphabet strips, and special pencils, and they get so ready, and then they can't come back to school till September, so they have to wait the whole summer. Last spring, we also provided a parent workshop for parents where they could come and meet with Mrs. Pico and with myself. We talked about reading with your child helps with reading and read aloud and also with homework. Then we split up into grade-level meetings where we had teachers meet in separate classrooms with students. I do believe we served pizza that night. I think Dr. Luft was serving pizza that night, right? And that was a great night, a great turnout. Parents were so happy just to be back in the building, right? And we were celebrating together, but really learning something very important. How do I support my children as readers during these early years? Always recommendations for homework habits and, and tricks to decode words and talk about comprehension and rhyming and phonemic awareness. So we plan to do more of those workshops this year. And it was a year where we did reach our high goals. We are still collecting the state data officially for our third and fourth grade ELA and math assessments, but I will share with you some IREDDI scores from last fall to spring, and you can see that even with the struggles we had and the interruptions at times with certain students, we continue to thrive and to grow, always focusing on health and safety, social-emotional wellness, community involvement, academic success, and celebrating our school data because it is something to celebrate. How are our students doing academically? This is just one window. We now have, we have our DRA scores for reading. We have our new ELA program, which provides lots of data for teachers to use to inform instruction, and of course, our state assessments. This is the IREDDI for grades two through four, and you can see this is for reading. It's a reading diagnostic test, and so the upper part, the green is what of course you're looking for, on or above grade level, yellow being one year below grade level, and red two or more. So if you look at our second graders, where they were in the fall, and how far that green bar stretches when they take it again in the spring. The yellow, you can see, more are, much fewer are in the red. And the same with third grade, that grew by leaps and bounds there, and fourth grade as well. So this is just one, kind of like a bird's eye view on the progress, where if you think about what these students were doing, they had their desks separated, they had masks on for much of the year, they were in and out of quarantine, and the teachers just continue to teach, provide instruction, and really determine that growth that occurred. This is math, and you can see the enormous growth that happened if you look at this measure. Grade two, for instance, if you look at the on or above grade level, just at the beginning of second grade with the second grade benchmarks, and how far they grew. Wonderful, we, you know, of course, we use our Eureka Math Program. We have AIS in place where needed, and you can see in grades two, three, and four, you want those red areas to shrink as you go through the year, and they did. And then came the summer. So now I'm up to the summer, where we continued to stay a very busy place throughout the summer months. The extended school year program took place in our building, which Dr. Doherty organizes, the ENL supports. We also had teams coming in for curriculum and scheduling work. We always, as a teacher team, look at our master schedule, which is a very complex meeting where you're sitting and really putting optimal learning opportunities for all students and making it all work together. We held the Summer Reading Challenge, and we always thank our sponsors who make that possible, and the children come in on Tuesdays with their reading logs and collect their prizes. We had the Summer Academic Boost Week, where children who were exiting kindergarten up through fourth grade came in for, I believe it was four days, four half-days to work on their reading and math skills to prepare for the year ahead. Kindergarten took place again this year with great success. And I will say, this year, we usually start with a certain first list from our kindergarten screening, and I would say, I would, I would venture to say 99% of the first list said, yes, I'd like to come. So it's a very, you know, I think it's a popular program now. People know it's worth the time, and you'll benefit, especially if you're invited because you might have had trouble transitioning into kindergarten screening, or you're looking for a little school readiness. So that is just a wonderful program that is benefiting our community. We held the kindergarten bus run and kindergarten back-to-school night in late August, and our kindergarten team did an amazing job getting our youngest into school, and of course, our new students to the district. And we had many sign up kind of the last week of August, and they came in and had a meeting with me, took a tour, got used to their school, found out where their classrooms were, so that eased the stress before the beginning of school. During the summer also, we had three full days of professional development for teachers who were available to come in to learn about our new ELA program, Scholastic Literacy. So on July 26th, 27th, and 28th, we were all together with the Scholastic Consultants going over the beginning and the, kind of the framework of the program. Of course, any of the ELA programs we look at, they are complex. They offer so many resources and so many levels of planning, but this three... They offer so many resources and so many levels of planning, but this three days really helped 26 of our elementary teachers who were there. It was an amazing turnout and they are so dedicated to learning and to doing the best they can with this reading and writing program. So, that was very motivating to have those three days together at the end of July. While preparing for the new school year, and this is my 10th opening of Putnam Valley Elementary, so I'm not saying it gets easier, you just, some things are a little more automatic and then there's always something to learn every day. But I would say, one of the greatest challenges that we had was the master schedule, only because we have, and I will show you the enrollment, we have four sections of fourth grade, six sections of third, six sections of second, and five of grades two. Did I say that right? No, five of grades one and grade K. Along with that, there might be some extra rotating preps that teachers can have so that they can work together. When you put in Mandarin and the science lab in there and children who have to line up with the ACHIEVE classrooms, it is a puzzle. It is a puzzle, but you know what? It's working. It really is. Sometimes I have trouble explaining it because it's so complex, but it's in place. And I do thank our scheduling team who met this summer to work so collaboratively. Always, we have our safety drills in place. We've had fire drills already this year, our lockdown drills, lockout drills. This year, we knew that Mandarin was stretching up to third grade. So, our current third graders have now had the opportunity to take Mandarin once a week for 30 minutes in their classrooms from kindergarten. So, kindergarten, first, second, and third. So, now we have it in all of those grades. And that scheduling took place as well, and we have a nice new teaching assistant named Ms. Tina. New Horizons in ACHIEF fits into the schedule very nicely, giving students what they need for their best learning. Social-emotional lessons are taking place in our classrooms and Mrs. Kilduff, our counselor, pushes in with her schedule to focus on the needs using the Second Step Program. And our back-to-school nights were scheduled and have taken place with a great turnout, grades one and two, and grades three and four. This year and last year, we had our support staff available. Each support staff faculty member had one night where they came and were able to meet with parents before our big meeting in the auditorium, followed by the classroom meetings, which of course, the parents find most important because they're meeting their child's teacher and hearing about the day. You'll hear a lot more about the ENL program after I talk, and this of course, is a picture from last year where we were all wearing masks. But Mr. Hogan helps to run the ENL program. We have 33 ENL learners in our building and Mr. Hogan works with other teachers who have the ENL certification as well, or T-SOL, and you know, it's just a great program. Some are just pulled out quickly, like you can see, this is in a hallway. Mr. Hogan does have a classroom and he brings children in with small group learning in his room, and he's very busy pushing into other classes throughout the day to provide services for students as well. And he'll explain to you where our ENL students come from, so many different places. We also planned for the year by making sure that our classrooms were located in locations in the school for optimal learning. You probably know that most of our grade levels, they're grouped together locally in the school so that the teachers can collaborate. If students go from one room to the next, they're all within the same neighborhood in the school. And so, that was done. We were able to hire three new teachers this past year who are doing an amazing job, and their classrooms and furniture and supplies were all organized for them so that they were ready to start and just hit the ground running this fall. Our outdoor learning spaces are gorgeous and I thank Mr. Dave Spittle for making this such a priority this past summer. He's worked closely with our head custodian, Ray Renzo, to make sure that the outdoor learning spaces have really gotten an upgrade at the elementary school. If you have the opportunity, this is the outdoor learning center, of course, with the tarp for shade. It has all-new benches. Some of the benches were splintering and cracking. It's so trimmed and cleaned out, landscaped. There's a pond there. I actually showed a picture already. There's a cement pond that I never knew was there. And there it is. It's all cleaned out, little frogs in there. I was out there with some third graders. They were just loving it. At the end of our first grade wing, we have new Adirondack chairs, new plants. It's all cleaned. And do you know that I went outside with a group of third graders? Grass had been planted. This summer was so dry that the eight-year-olds were saying, look at the green grass. They're appreciating. They're appreciating nature and nice weather. And of course, the pond area is just such a gift to us. Teachers, you know, they take their radios, they go outside. I know Ms. Bros does the pond study work with her students, with teachers, and there's a big table built by a Boy Scout, and we're just so lucky. We're so lucky to have such a campus filled with so many learning spaces outside. And we know it will snow, but right now, it's perfect. Our Character Ed and Diversity Committee is already hard at work. Our first whole-school assembly in several years takes place tomorrow. We are welcoming all of the children together in the auditorium to talk about the theme for this work, which is, for this year, which is teamwork. And the PTA provided this book, A Little Spot of Teamwork, to every single classroom, and we thank the PTA for that. We, of course, you heard from one of our fourth graders, we have our Tree of Great Expectations, where we celebrate all character traits that show us how to be kind, safe, respectful, and responsible. And those are common words that from kindergarten on, our children know. And we celebrate, not by celebrating a certain name, but by celebrating a word like patient or responsible or dependable. And when someone gets one of those awards, we celebrate the word and put it up on the tree. It is Hispanic-American Heritage Month now, September 15th through October 15th. So, our Character Ed Committee has provided resources to our teachers in their classrooms. If they haven't received them yet, they'll receive them by tomorrow, just resources with books and videos. And I thank the Character Ed Committee for always finding these resources for us. And as I said, Mandarin is now K, one, two, and three. Each class gets a 30-minute session once a week with Ms. Tina Lay, who is new to us this year, but is working closely with Dr. Lynn Allen at Bosse's, Dr. Ryan at Bosse's, and of course, Wendy Lee, who comes into our school often and just oversees the program. The children greet her in Mandarin. I had a kindergartner last week tell his teacher after he wrote something, he said, I just wrote it in Mandarin. So, they're very proud and they love the artwork and the puppets and the songs, and the children are really engaged in this learning. We're grateful for it. So, you saw our Safety Patrolers, which originally was brought to our school by Mrs. O'Dell. It's now led by Mrs. Keeler, and it's just a wonderful program, teaching responsibility and leadership. We have the Kids of Character Club at the elementary school, of course, the famous PVES musical every year, the Gym Show, which will take place in the fall this year, a new club, Young Explorers Club for young children in the school, Science Maker Fair, which has been taking place for years, but it just keeps getting better and better with Mrs. Bruno and Mrs. Bros leading the way. We definitely have them, the children, work closely with our high school honor students in science. And the Tri-County Science Fair, some of our children are asked to participate. Last year, they did participate in the Tri-County Science Fair. It was virtual and we are really counting on that being in-person this year because it was challenging, but they did very well. And actually, all our students were rated very well at that Tri-County Science Fair. And there we have the beautiful science lab on the right, and Mrs. Bros, our teacher aide, who really oversees the materials and coordination of that beautiful room where classes are scheduled throughout the week to go in with their teachers and learn our Science 21 curriculum. This is, we have two fourth graders from last year proudly presenting their science fair, and that will take place in the spring this year. But we were able to do that even last year with great participation. That was actually such a happy night because it was one of the first nights all of the parents of a grade level were invited in, and they were just so pleased and just so proud of their children. We use our Eureka Math Curriculum, which continues to provide our students with such a strong foundation. Our teachers will tell you, they've learned the concepts of math better than they ever have in their life. So, we're happy with this. This was an example while we were choosing the literacy program, looking back to when Eureka was chosen. We knew some things worked and in conferring with central administration, I wanted to make sure that we reflected on the fact that as a teacher team, we looked at math programs very carefully. We did our research to see how closely aligned Eureka was to the standards for the state. We also guaranteed solid and continuous professional development, which made all the difference for that curriculum. So, we had been through that as a study team. So, looking at literacy and looking at the programs that were available, we knew some things that were almost non-negotiable for us. And there we have it. So, I will tell you the story of this. Last year, a teacher team came and said, I think we're ready. I think we're ready to pilot something. We're all pulling resources from different places to make sure we meet the standards. And that's not a bad thing. We know the standards. We knew the basics of what we were using material-wise in our reader-writer workshops. We knew the Engage New York modules, which provided completely standards-aligned literacy, along with what we use for word study, foundations, we use our vocabulary sites. But when a group of teachers comes to a principal and says, I think we're ready, the principal has to jump on that. And it was just really a beautiful teacher-initiated idea. Well, before I knew it, there was another grade level who said, well, if they're piloting something, we might as well join in. And over the course of maybe a month and a month and a half, and you know, Jackie said, make sure you have a rep from every grade level because this might take off. And we had the team, and before we knew it, we had a K-4 devoted, dedicated team to looking at the programs that were out there. And the team grew and grew and it was no longer a pilot. We were adopting a program. We narrowed it down and we narrowed it down some more, and it was just such a good experience professionally, looking at the programs. Now, when you think of literacy programs back when you were in school, and when, definitely when I was in school, the teacher, the big manual, the workbooks and the worksheets, and that was the reading program. Reading programs now are up-to-date with standards. There is a digital component. There's an assessment component. There's an ENL component. There's a guided reading component. And so, when we looked at that, it started to be a little overwhelming. It's amazing what these programs are. So, we've just learned so much as educators. We chose Scholastic and we really wanted, and one of our main missions was, the consistency and standardization. So, if I'm a third-grade teacher, I will know what all of these second-grade teachers had as far as education, instruction, resources. It doesn't matter which teacher they had. They are using the program, and although teachers can always make choices, we know the units, we know the plans, and we know the resources that are available. Teachers don't have to spend their own time looking up resources that will match the standard. They're at their fingertips. In fact, it's almost too much at their fingertips, but we're sorting through it. So, we had the ELA team do the work. We looked for authentic literature. We looked for a program that allowed us to use centers and small group and station-based learning. Guided reading was a very big focus for us. Standardized assessment so that we know as first graders, no matter what class you're in, you're taking the same assessment, so we know what level you're at and we know where we can take you from there. We wanted a program that included solid writing instruction. Every program we looked at had a digital component for students and for teachers, and we wanted one that worked for us. Scholastic actually helps you with the children putting in the data and having the digital assessment. It helps you group your students according to their academic needs. We really like that. And our teachers wanted books, beautiful books, authentic books. And so, these are just some of the materials that are available and in our building through Scholastic, and I thank the district so much for their support with this because no program is free, every program is an investment, and we want to do the best we can with it. If you look on the left there, you'll see how Scholastic would love for you to set up your elementary classroom with tables or centers. You have a reading nook, you have a guided reading table, you have technology, and you have books available on the sides of the room. So, one of the head consultants from Scholastic said, I know this is dreamy, you know, not every classroom looks like this. And I said, oh, yes, if you walk around Putnam Valley Elementary, our classrooms really do look like that. We're so fortunate. We really are. These are just a sample of some of the teacher additions and the student resources we have. And on the right, the far-right picture, when you go into the book room, which I'm about to show you, you actually pick up a little baggie of books for your guided reading group. There are six copies of each book, and there's a teacher card highlighting standards, learning targets, vocabulary, themes, and everything you need to know that connects to the unit. Then, you go into the book room. Look at this beautiful book room that comes with the Scholastic program. Every teacher, K through four, can sit at their laptop, sign out their guided reading books according to the interests of children, the reading levels of children, whether they want to do fiction, nonfiction. They sign it out electronically. They walk in and physically take out the sleeve of books that matches their needs, and everyone knows if they're looking for that particular story, they know who has it because it's signed out under their name. And we're going to have teachers even sign out physically in the book too, just to make sure we keep track. This room is in the front of the school now. It is extremely organized. And how many books did we say was something? Thousands and thousands. I forgot the number right now, but this is, this was a real plus of this program. And when we were opening the materials this summer, I was like, oh, it feels like a birthday. I mean, you're just opening the most beautiful pieces of literature. And as Jen and I said, this is why we became teachers, to open books like this and to share them with children. And so, we're just so excited about this. We're going to learn a lot. Our consultants, our learning leaders from Scholastic are meeting with us as leaders regularly. That's part of the plan. They meet with our grade-level coordinators to help with communication. And then, we have coaching days for the teachers throughout the year. So, the professional development is in place. Do we have lots of questions? Yes, our teachers work very hard. They try to do everything just so well. So, lots of questions right now. It's what, the 14th day of school? We really have questions. We are sorting through. We want to do everything the right way, and the consultants will say, well, use your judgment. And we don't know the program for the whole year yet, so we're at that tricky stage. I can't wait to report on it next year to tell you how it's going. This is a huge undertaking. It's so exciting and we have the whole school all in, which is just an amazing thing to do with this staff. So, the ongoing Scholastic literacy, as I said, all of these meetings are taking place, Scholastic check-ins with our Scholastic reps. Videos are available on the website, the teacher hub for Scholastic. They have access to many resources. They're still digging into the videos and resources and everything they can use with their students. We also want to be part of just our own collegial circles. Briar Cliff Todd Elementary School is adopting Scholastic this year as well. So, we are looking forward to working closely with them, the administrators, we've all been in touch, to set up even learning walks and meetings so that we can all learn together. We are still continuing, especially this year, to hold on, holding on to what works for us and has worked for us. Our children have done well in reading and writing, and we want to keep that going. So, we are using foundations. We did not adopt the phonics part of Scholastic at this point. We're still using our foundations program, and our teachers have been really trained in that, K through three. We're still using our DRA2 reading assessments, and that is just twice a year now, so that when we talk about the DRA levels, which we've become very familiar with, especially in our RTI meetings, we still have that twice a year, and the Scholastic assessments, the NSGRA at the other points in the year. So, we have a lot of talk, a lot of learning going on. Progress monitoring is going on throughout the year so that we can support our young readers and bring them to the next level. We're still using We're still using the writing revolution. And at this point, I can be honest, we're learning how to incorporate that into our new literacy program. The writing revolution is a great philosophy of teaching writing. It can be integrated across the content areas. But we want to make sure that we're doing it always with fidelity and accuracy and doing the best we can for our students. Of course, we have quarterly data meetings, so we're checking the progress of all our students as we look at this data. And response to intervention continues to be our RTI meetings where that happens weekly. And we've changed that a little bit and I'll talk about that, just to make it more efficient and more effective for our students. We are always teaching the whole child. That includes this beautiful artwork that these children completed in art class. We still have our innovation lab as a special. The children go to physical education twice a week and of course, music. So always thinking about how they're doing socially and emotionally, handling little friendship and playground problems pretty much every day. But as I tell parents, every day is a learning opportunity. That's why we're here. We do have focus areas for this year. We're always looking to improve. We have areas where we want to get better and we want to do better for ourselves and for our students. The next-gen standards are coming. We want to make sure we are well-versed in our ELA and math standards, which don't appear to be strikingly different from what we're doing. But we want to be on top of that as educators and make sure that we know the standards inside and out. The Scholastic implementation will be the focus of most of our professional development hours throughout the year. It's an enormous undertaking and we're going to use our PD hours whenever possible for that. The MTSS, multiple, okay, support systems, multiple-tier support system, right, okay, which incorporates RTI, social-emotional, behavioral. This is all something we continue to be part of with this big umbrella of services. And we want to make sure that we improve our ability to meet student needs with that and understand the process. Intervention for students is always a focus for us. How do we provide the best intervention for students? How do we make sure we're not leaving children out who need support outside of the classroom or even in the classroom at tier one? How do we make sure that children who have received intervention stop receiving it when they are ready? And that is something we're fine-tuning all the time. That is not easy work. How do we make sure the intervention is truly meeting the needs in a differentiated way? We want to effectively use Scholastic data to inform instruction. So Scholastic data is new to us. How to administer the assessments is new to us. So we are all really working together. We had a professional development hour after school on Monday. Our elementary teachers, we all met with Mrs. Pico in the auditorium. We all worked very closely with the details of the Scholastic assessments. We are also still focusing on foundations. So we have the hopes for a turnkey leader to lead the way with even more education and foundations for our teachers because we're finding foundations to be very effective with decoding and phonics. We're supporting our growing ENL population. And I would just say, without, you know, too much data in front of me, I would say in the past few weeks, we're feeling the growing ENL population, which is a beautiful thing. We're making sure their needs are met. We're making sure our schedules match their needs. And we're making sure that Jonathan Hogan is running 80 miles an hour all day long, right? Okay. We always want to work on and improve our parent connections, supporting academics, connecting home and school, inviting our parents in, making sure that even after these difficult years, they know they are welcome to our school for events and special visits to classrooms. And that's something, you know, with new ideas for workshops, teachers have ideas to bring parents in. That's definitely a focus for us, along with letting our parents become familiar with the new Scholastic literacy and the math support and the next-gen standards. So there's lots to work on. We're proud of our work, but there's always more work to do. Our PVES doors are really open. They're locked, but they're open. We are excited about this year. We have hit the ground running for sure. It's a happy place. The children are so happy. They make us so proud. And as you can see, they do really well and they, they're a pleasure to work with each and every day. So thank you and I'm happy to answer questions.
I just have a comment. The diagnostic math and reading growth is phenomenal.
Thank you. Yes, they did very well.
I looked at the scores and I said, this is, this is just amazing. And my second, I have a question. Do you accept board members into the Eureka math program?
If you are ready to decompose numbers, yes. That's what you have to do. But I will say, you know, I can't stop celebrating it. But when we found out in the spring of 2019, those scores were in the top 3% of New York State, that was no small thing. We have come so far as a teaching staff, really digging into curriculum and really understanding the data in front of us. Our teachers are so dedicated to providing not just instruction, but quality instruction. And taking on a new literacy program, it's exciting, but it's scary at the same time because you know, our kids are doing well. But the teachers were asking, you know, do we have to be pulling from all these sources? And do we have to guess what they had last year because this teacher chose to do this? So it's a big undertaking, but yes, even though last year was so challenging, the children were thriving. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm very happy to see that that pond that you referenced and also had a picture of, it's finally been rehabilitated. When I was a first grader, the nature club of eighth and ninth grade, because we were all housed in the same building, came down and dug it out with help of a custodian. This is 1959, 50, 60, around there. And then over the years, it was abandoned. And it always bothered me that this beautiful pond was left just to be overgrown and not used. And I saw it this past weekend. The whole area back there, just phenomenal. The trees that were removed, the new wooden fence behind the building. The removal of all that overgrowth that just blocked the view of the learning center. Just gorgeous. And it, it, it will lead to a lot of good memories for your kids. Like I said, as a kindergarten kid, a first grader, I remember that pond vividly. They will remember it as well.
That is so nice. Well, thank you again to Mr. Spittle, who really led the way this summer with all of that. And it really is gorgeous. But that's, that's very nice that you have those memories.
Make sure that, to Helen's point, that every time you do a parent workshop, that we get invited. I know sometimes we don't know about them and like when I was, even some of the ones that you were showing us tonight from last year, I thought, oh, I'd have loved to have been there. Maybe you did and I missed it, which is entirely possible. But really make sure that we know. Because I, one of the ways we learn about what the students are doing is to do those kind of things.
Yes. You're invited to everything. The kindergartners are having an Elmo parade tomorrow morning. If you can stop by the district office about 10:30 or 11:00, celebrating their unique characteristics.
Speaking of the parent workshops, are you planning to have any this fall?
We don't have anything scheduled yet. We're still working out our parent conference schedule and all of that. But we definitely have plans to have ELA and math and probably ENL workshops this year. Yes. So we'll invite you to everything and we'll get them on the schedule.
That was a very extensive and excellent report. I like the fact that you're so inclusive on all the aspects of what it takes to work with an elementary school child and their parents as well. And integrating the, the training of your instructors with this, really a good, good job.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Tell Ms. Pico we hope she feels better.
She'll be back running marathons tomorrow, probably. Thank you. Well done. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. I thought you were done, but you're not.
I forgot to say thank you, so I just want to make sure I did.
On the continuity of learning with Scholastic, I want to make sure I understand clearly the idea of a fourth-grade teacher, this is projecting in future, of course, a fourth-grade teacher being able to see specifically the work that that student did as a third grader, not just kind of a general idea, but you could see specifically the work that was done, the reading that was done the previous year. That's part of the program.
That's what?
That's part of the program?
Yes, it is. Absolutely. The consistency, yes.
Because I was, you know, when you said it, I'm like, that could be kind of general, like, we know what the teacher was doing because of that. But knowing specifically how it's tagged to a student, that would be a great reference to go back to, to help build the bridge if there's a struggle.
Yes. And the themes of study are all mapped out beautifully. And you can see each grade level's theme of study, unit of study. So anyone could go look at them at any time online. And they all kind of line up, K-4. It's, I thought you were going to say something else. So our fourth grade, see, I'm way too honest. Our fourth-grade team is getting children in fourth grade that have never had Scholastic.
Right. That's what I'm saying in the future.
Okay. So we're having those conversations and they're good conversations. They're very intellectual conversations about children coming into a new format, guided reading, a bookroom, whole-class learning, independent learning that is on technology, some of it. And they are getting fourth graders who did really well in third grade. And so we're having those, you know, let's call them conversations. But it's, it's good learning. It's good professional learning. And that's why our Scholastic representatives, they call it year zero right now. It's going to be a great year, but next year, we're allowed to call it year one. Right now, we are putting it out there and our kids are going to do well.
I'll just also add, it's evident in the student, in the routines and processes and language they are using as they come up through the years. It'll be familiar. The routines will be familiar. So the teacher will be able to see that the child has been through the program, engaged in the same type of learning activities, the same types of functions, using the same language in their questioning techniques. They'll be able to see it through that process as well.
Because it'll take us a number of years to know the real impact. This is not a, we'll know tomorrow or next year. It'll take a number of years because everything will take four years to find out how it started from where it started.
That's right.
With every change that we do.
I just think it's important to note that although the processes and the practices and the resources may be different, I think the test scores validate what a tremendous job our teachers do in teaching to the standards. So just like they teach it to standards now, Scholastic is written to those same standards. So the learning will still continue to be continuous from grade level to grade level. There'll be new processes, new practices and new resources. But what the students are actually learning is very consistent. So that should benefit those students. Unlike the implementation of the Common Core where what they were physically learning changed, this is a much different situation because they're already well-known in the standards that they're teaching to.
And then I'm always concerned, we've had this conversation before when we added a new program, that it replaces something, is not just stacked on top and everybody's expected to jump all over it and then burn out because there's just too many things happening. I know something has been said numerous times. You can't keep adding and adding and not take something away. Can you talk a little bit more because I'm seeing the overlap on foundations and the writing revolution and how they will integrate into the whole process?
That's a great question because we are working out a balance right now. We didn't want to adopt the word-study phonics part of Scholastic at this point because we know how successful our students have been with the foundations program. We also know the training our teachers have had, so they're quite adept at teaching it. So everything is kind of a wait and see. We are, we are using foundations completely this year, K through third grade. We also are, or will be incorporating the writing revolution, which isn't a program. It's more an approach. So that can be used and that can be used up through high school. It's, it's an amazing program. But there are things like, would we eventually go to the word-study phonics that Scholastic offers? At this point, we're not. There are schools who adopted Scholastic but didn't take in the assessment piece. We said, if we're going to do this, let's take in the assessment piece because the data will be very helpful to us. The other thing is the reading assessment of the DRA2 takes time. It takes time out of a teacher's day, a student's day. And yet, we were hesitant to give that up because we're so familiar with it. And in our RTI process, it really provides a true number that we know according to benchmark rubrics. So I'm not sure that's, we'll see. Because eventually, you know, we, we definitely cut out the number of DRAs we plan to do this year, but we are looking for that balance. And we're going to see how comfortable we are with the results of the Scholastic assessments as far as information. But yes, that's where we are right now.
Then physically, that bookroom, is that the first classroom on the right when you walk in?
Yes.
I recognize the classroom.
And he, it's shared by, with Alex Goffman in Technology, who helped me so much with this, with the pictures and the slide, I have to say that.
And then on a different note, on enrollment.
Oh, where is my enrollment slide?
It was in between. It was in there somewhere, but it wasn't shown up there.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's right before the ENL. Where it's showing, you had, you had mentioned it, 66554. The, I know that some of our funding choices for the COVID money, correct, is being, was built into these two positions, two of the positions, correct? So, and we, it was kind of a recapture, the idea of recapturing any loss of learning that had happened over the last couple of years. That's the reasoning for keeping those classes low, especially in first, second grade or second and third grade. That is, that is, as far as the model is concerned, we'll probably end up with something a little different 2023, 2024, unless there are retirements, et cetera, where these class sections might get a little bit larger to that 23, 24, as we've expected in grade four and grade three in the past.
Right. So we know that we have another year of that federal stimulus fund, so that carries those positions for an additional year. So by looking at the slide that's up there now, those two larger classes, the second and third grade class, next year will be third and fourth grade class. So what that means is the following year, once the funding moves on, the funding dries up, that one of those classes will in fact be moving into the middle school, where we're better prepared to have those kids in slightly larger class sizes. So I had done the math quickly when the slide, when I saw the slide. And the 127 comes out to about 25 students in a class on average. The 132 is about 26. That's an estimate some students go to achieve for certain classes, so that's not a real number. But it's something that we certainly would be cognizant of. Timing-wise, it works out for us as long as we don't get a ginormous kindergarten class coming in one year, which is always a possibility. In the end, once that federal stimulus funds go away, we're looking at one more year with six sections and then really hopefully going back to five sections in each of those grades, which is our typical sort of equilibrium at the elementary school. That's our typical staffing.
And then an additional enrollment question. We started, I should say we started the year, but December, last year, we had 527 students at this time. Did that include all the remote students as well?
Yes.
So there was not, there's not a missing cadre. So we really have a growth of math. Seven and five always throws me off, so maybe I need to go into that math class.
And just looking ahead, not to steal your next point, but the following year, you're looking at probably another 30 to 40 student increase. Once you lose the class of 80 students, assuming we bring in a typical-sized kindergarten class, you're looking at 30 to 40 student, additional students added to that building, gets us back up to closer to 600.
Keep talking about lower enrollment, but we're not seeing it here, that's for sure.
Well, I think if you compare these class sizes to the most recent in the high school, you know, it's quite different. But these are nice-sized classes and we appreciate those class section sizes if you look at them. It's really kind of ideal. Yeah.
And I know we've spoken at length over the past several years where we've seen a tremendous influx of families moving into Putnam Valley. We like to think because of our educational program. And a vast majority of those students that are moving in are moving in in elementary school-aged classes. So I think of that breakdown, we've spoken about 300 and however many families had moved in, that a majority of those students are likely represented in these class numbers here.
Right. You want to establish your roots early on in a community. The, in a more general sense, on an academic level, how does, this is a real broad picture, 40,000 feet-type situation. If we are looking 40,000-feet-type situation, if we are looking at installing a middle-years program in middle school, which is really kind of more of a mindset rather than a program-program, would, at that's, at some point, we be envisioning becoming an entire IB district, and how that plays into kind of the Scholastic model, and that all fits and plays well together?
Certainly. So, obviously, we're now at the, at the starting line of the middle-years implementation in the middle school, so that's a multi-year endeavor, just to get to the authorization piece.
Right.
But certainly, right, anyone who is a superintendent of a school district with a diploma program and a middle-years program would be anxious to pursue the primary-years program in the elementary school. So, I can assure you that Scholastic would marry very well with that. Again, it's not similar to middle-years program, you're not adopting a new curriculum or a new program, it's all standards-based, it's really more of the same philosophy, mindset, approach to learning, which is what you would adopt as part of that IB program. So, the standards wouldn't change, hence the programs wouldn't need to change in order to meet those standards.
And then finally, on enrollment, I'm sorry, did we see enrollment kind of go up in all grades, with the, the, the new enrollees that just came in the last, the most recent enrollees, is that in, lumped in just throughout the entire building at this point?
Yes. Last year, it just, they seemed to keep coming to second grade for, for, so those, that cohort now is 132 students in third grade, I was like, wow, we have to put up a sign, you know, second graders. But, in general, it's across the board, yeah.
I'm done now, sorry.
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you.
I just want to commend Dr. Podesta and Ms. Pico, and the tremendous faculty and staff we have in that building. I truly believe Putnam Valley Elementary School is the happiest place on earth. It's where I go when I need an adult break, which happens often in my line of work. And I was, a quick little story, on the first day of school, I was going on the elementary school buses, we were waiting for the last ones to get there, it's a very organized arrival process, especially for kindergartners the first day, so the kids have been sitting on the bus, and they're getting a little restless, and I would walk on the bus and talk to them, and the amount of energy, where you're like, is everyone happy to be here? They're like, yeah! I can promise you, the same enthusiasm doesn't necessarily exist on the middle school and high school buses, but elementary school students are very excited to come back to school, so it is really a happy place, and tremendous faculty and staff there that make everything that was shared here this evening possible, so huge compliment to everyone. And again, very impressive work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to have our E N L presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Podesta, but good evening, members of the board, Dr. Loft, and members of our community, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to discuss our English as a New Language program at Putnam Valley. I always like to start with our Y, and our Y is our vision, the child first and foremost, building a foundation for the future, for the future of all of the children in Putnam Valley, and everything we do, we look through the lens of what is best for our students, and that is how we keep the child at the center of our decision-making. Alongside our mission, and of course, within our mission in partnership with our families and our community, we hope to ensure that all students are engaged in a challenging, student-focused educational program, understand and assume the responsibility for lifelong learning work to achieve their personal best, and become productive citizens in a diverse global society. And this applies especially when we're talking about English as a new language, for students who come here speaking a different language at home, or whose parents speak a different language at home. We want all of our children to understand they are part of a much bigger world than just Putnam Valley. Before I go forward, I do want to welcome up my partner in my presentation today, and introduce you to him today. I think I might have skipped a slide, maybe I didn't, okay. And this is Jonathan Hogan, who will be presenting beside me this evening. Jonathan is a fantastic teacher, our newly-appointed coordinator of E N L Services and Community Liaison. I spent a lot of time in his classroom last year, and mostly because the children in his classroom are just adorable, and the things that they learn from him, and the way he communicates with his students, and the excitement he generates is just out of this world. And I have to say, I am so fortunate to work so closely with our E N L department, we have incredibly passionate, dedicated educators who are really just there for the students and thinking about the students all day and all night. And I will have Angela Matanz email me in the middle of the evening, saying that she's thinking about a new resource, she's constantly uploading her Google Classroom for the middle school teachers, new resources. This is the most dedicated team of professionals I've had the pleasure of working with in a very long time, which is true to say for almost every single person I've worked with in Putnam Valley. And I know I haven't had the chance to work with everyone yet, but I know that our E N L team is just tremendous. So, E N L Services are mandated services, and what that really means is that the state, the Commissioner's Regulation Part 154, really outlines what we do in terms of how we identify students, what programs and services are required for students, depending on where they fall in the assessment, which we'll talk about soon, how we involve the parents and the community into our school community, and what professional learning our teachers need, and resources, I will add as well, which is something that our E N L team has been looking very closely at, now that we have grown in our population for E N L Services, looking at really strong resources that are consistent and aligned to standards, and help them progress through the grade levels, that all of our teachers in the E N L program are using will be important. I feel like I skipped a slide here. I did, oh, there it is, I really wanted to make sure I highlighted the teachers I'm speaking about. So, I have just introduced Jonathan Hogan, who is stationed at the elementary school, but is our coordinator, K-12, and then Angela Matanz is at our middle school, Justine Trainer and Sharon Lum are new teachers who teach in the World Language Department, but are E N L certified, so therefore do provide services in E N L to students. We also have Alyssa Hemelfarb and Julia Nelson, who are at the high school, working with our high school E N L students. Now I can go further, or not. Nope. Maybe it's just me, I'm not being patient enough. All right. Back to where we were, here we go. Okay, so we do have requirements we have to meet, and according to the plans that we have to move forward through the state, we do have to outline specifically how the needs of our E N L students are being met, providing our plan that is supposed to be guided by the regulations and the requirements, and ensuring that our students are receiving academic, rigorous academic instruction. Some really important key points I pulled out of the NICE blueprint for E N L Services is especially that all teachers are teachers of E N L or M L, and then also that all boards and administrators are responsible for this important work as well. So, ensuring that we are providing everything these students need on a social level, academic level, and emotional support as well. We are required to make sure that our school communities are leveraging the teachers among us, who are experts in this area, and also ensuring they have consistent professional learning and resources to continue their craft, making sure that we have assessment practices to make sure students are moving along in their E N L services that are provided for them, and eventually exiting out of requiring E N L services. So, these are just some really important points from the NICE blueprint that everyone should be aware of when we're talking about Part 154. But let's talk about, not what the state requires, but what it's really like to be an E N L student here in Putnam Valley, and what happens. And I think the best possible person to talk about this would be Mr. Hogan, our E N L coordinator.
So, one of the first things we do when we come in is, is we talk a lot about identification, the orientation process, and progress monitoring, those are the three things that we really zone in on. So, in terms of identification, we're immediately trying to assess the needs and develop a plan for the mandated service minutes. This is something that's outlined by the state at the state level, and it's been in place for quite some time. So, ideally, the compliance is what drives it, but above and beyond that, once we identify the student and assess their needs, there's then, we'll move on to like an orientation process. So, that's where parents are invited in, students meet with teachers, and in the middle school and high school, more so even than in the elementary school, there's a buddy that they're provided with. It's not that they're not provided with a buddy in the elementary school, but when a new kid comes into the class, it's kind of so exciting that everybody wants to really be their buddy, so that's not really as much as an issue, we don't transition through classes, and usually, like they do in the middle school or the high school, but the students are in the classroom for most of the time with that homogenous group, so they'll transition around the building together. So, usually, there's one, two, or even more students that are helping any new individual students that come into that classroom. And then, of course, the progress monitoring part, where the students are regularly assessed for linguistic and academic growth. There's lots of E N L studies that we could reference and talk about, but we definitely want to push these kids through the program. We try to avoid, as much as we can, having what are considered long-term Ls, who have been in the program for more than six or seven years. And I think our school district does a fantastic job with that, because one of the things I love most about here is, there's just so many teachers that are working with any one student. It's, it's almost impossible to slip through the cracks, especially at the elementary school, because there's so many procedures and safeguards and protocols in place, so that lots of eyes fall upon each student, and that's across the academic areas. This is just more from the NICE web site, that if anyone was ever interested in, you could take a look, this is all public knowledge, but this is kind of the identification steps as to what happens. So, when a new family comes into the school, they might meet with the district office, either Alicia Hunter, or somebody else that might be present. If I'm around and they speak Spanish, I sometimes get a phone call, because I can help expedite the process a little bit. But we provide a whole language identification survey that goes out to the parents almost immediately, so it's just a number of questions about where the student came from, what type of academics they'd received, if they had an IEP, either at their old school, or they have, there's lots of demographic questions about the family, too. Step two, again, we get back to the assessment, which would take place in English and the native language, if and when available, and, you know, we work to see what school district they came from. Maybe they came from Ecuador, there's lots of new students to our school that came from Ecuador this year, or maybe they just came over from Peekskill. There's certain students that transition, and the reason I bring Peekskill up is there's a number of dual-language programs offered there. So, students might have been in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, with a certified bilingual teacher who's teaching in both English and Spanish throughout the course of the day, or throughout the course of the year. There's different models and protocols that you can follow, but using their prior knowledge and native language skills can really help us in terms of boosting their English achievements in a much shorter window. So, step three is, is really where I come in when the student first arrives at the school, there's an exam called the NICE tel, which is, we sit down and assess the student's ability to speak, listen, read, and write in English, and based on those resorts, there's cut scores that we send this out, it's sent to the state, and based on those results, we determine how many compliance minutes that we have to meet with each child, and it usually ranges between 36 and 72 minutes a day. 36 minutes would be for the students who are a little more further advanced in the program, they can communicate more than their peers who just arrived, and 72 minutes a day would be through a variety of means. Some of that is pull-out into a classroom like mine, where it's sheltered instruction, and it's, it's really great. So, if you're ever in the neighborhood, I, I invite you to come through early in the morning, because I'm, I'm working with a bunch of kindergartners, first graders and second graders, who, some of them are brand-new to the country, one's been here less than three or four days, and it's just fascinating to see the perspective through their eyes, having been in the school system, but someplace very, very different, and that's very exciting. So, talking about our K and L, our K through 12 E N L team, it's, it's a fantastic team that we work with here, and the department is growing as the number of students continue to pour into our school each year. We have formed a structure to allow for as seamless a transition as we can for new students into the program, that specifically is fine-tuned and tailored to match their needs. So, what I mean by that is, we want to see them progress in the content areas of reading, writing, math, science, gym, but we also want to set up linguistic goals that might be specific and fine-tuned for these students, that wouldn't necessarily be needed for other students, because they are already communicating in their first language, which would be English. We meet regularly to review curricular resources, we've partnered with local organizations for learning, and we seek out professional learning opportunities whenever we can. I personally work very closely with the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's, and the Arburn, it's called, and they provide us with a host of answers and professional development sessions that I attend, sometimes weekly, but at the very least monthly. So, if I ever have any questions with compliance, or just for new approaches, refugees, anything, they're readily available, and they've been proven to be very helpful over the years. Sure.
I would just like to add at this point, as we're talking about the professional learning that we offer to our E N L team, we also offer this to all of our teachers. So, just recently, a superintendent conference day, we had sessions offered by the Arburn for free to us, because it is a grant-based program, at our superintendent conference day, we were able to tailor it, because we had them for the whole morning, a session for middle, a session for high, and a session for elementary school. So, through partnerships, strategic partnerships like that with community resources and local Bosse's, we're able to provide a lot of professional opportunities, resources, and learning to our colleagues in our schools.
Jackie's right, and above and beyond that, some of the PD that the E N L department in our own school district has set up over superintendent's conference days in the past has been very well-received by the teaching staff, because as the demographics and populations start to change here a little bit, so do fine-teening the, fine-tuning the teaching approaches for how we're tackling these new challenges that come our way. And then you can also see we're developing plans and checklists for the school district to support the regular addition of, of new students, and provide a welcoming atmosphere for the kids, because I think, and not just for the students, but I'll go on in a minute and talk more about what we do for the families as a whole, but we really do go out of our way at the elementary school to welcome students in. I, I can't remember the last time a student arrived without me having already spoken to their parents, and let them know, I'm going to be there personally, or one of our other staff will help that child off the bus, walk them into their classroom to meet their teacher, introduce them to new friends, and then, quite often, I will be able to help and shadow them for a first few hours or a few days, before they become a little more acclimated to the program. So, that kind of shell shock, having moved outside the country and having to learn a brand-new culture, I've done it several times myself, and it, it's overwhelming. So, thinking about it through the eyes of a small child, who's really, it's totally new to them, we do a great job in the elementary school and throughout the school district to help those students really feel more acclimated, and it helps them lower the effective filter, and it sets them up for success, because so much of what we do isn't just about educating the child, but in a more holistic sense, like, with through social and emotional learning, we're, we're working a lot with that, and we've done quite a bit of that through the last couple of years through COVID. And just really quickly, a lot of that comes from our partnerships with local Putnam Valley communities. I'm still relatively new to the district, this is, I'm starting my fourth year here, I've been teaching a long time, but I, I do love, again, sort of, in a larger sense, what we do at the school, where there might be six or seven specialists that are talking about one individual child, we also have agencies that we're working with to support families. And I think it was fantastic, Dr. Doherty and I have worked several times together on making sure we're helping families, be it with electric needs, or getting a computer or internet set up at their house, for the first time in a lot of cases, so that they could continue receiving instruction from the teachers. So, that's been a really great experience, too. One of the things that works, this is the group of students that I work with, first period, we've just added a new one just yesterday, so one of the instructional practices that work really well for me is the small-group instruction. So, what I love about it so much is it really lowers what we call the effective filter. So, a lot of the students you see here may be more timid, shy in the general classroom setting, and especially because lots of them don't speak any English at all, and they're learning it for the very first time, but in this kind of safe space, they're allowed to sort of project their voice and feel seen a little bit more than in the larger classroom setting. I think our teachers do a great job of that as well, but it is just a special chance for them to shine in a smaller group.
He's being very humble. There is a lot of cheering, dancing, explosions of joy in that classroom whenever I go in every morning. So, it really is such a delightful place, and I'm wishing now I had a video here in my presentation, next time, of Mr. Hogan teaching.
Well, it definitely helps to have a cup of coffee or two before I set foot in there every morning. Some of the other stuff that we do that works really well, and these are tried-and-true instructional practices, the collaborative group work, intercultural exchanges is, is really helpful, too, because we have students from all different cultures. I mean, I mean, I would say the majority of students that have come in recently in our community tend to be Ecuadorian, but we are receiving students from the Ukraine. We have students from Mexico, Guatemala, and Portugal. So there are a variance in languages and cultures, so being able to provide the students, and later on, I'll talk more about what we do with the families outside of the school day, to provide these kinds of intercultural exchanges, it dovetails nicely with what we're trying to do with the IB program and create more global awareness and create global students that are focused more on, you know, lots of different things. We want to provide them with as many opportunities as we can in a very equal and fair way. And some of the other things we do, things like ENL buddies, I talked about that a little bit before, at the middle school and high school, it's particularly important because it could be very easily difficult for a child to navigate their way through the system for the first couple of days. But like some others have already attested to tonight, it feels to me like the overwhelming majority of new arrivals are coming in at the elementary age. I was thinking about it the last few days myself, and, you know, once you kind of start raising your children in a place, the roots tend to grow a little deeper, and you might be a little more hesitant to move. But for a myriad of reasons, there's lots of people coming here, and the great educational system has definitely got to be at the top of it. Some of the other things, what I do specifically in my room would be considered standalone support. So on a scale of one to five is kind of how we rate the scores of the proficiency of the students. So if you're at level one or two, you're entitled to that standalone support. So these are the students that are coming with me, often having been weeks, months, maybe even a year in country. So they need different supports and more intense, you know, basic nuts-and-bolts kind of English in order to get through and just acclimate to the process and the culture as a whole. And that's one of the things that we like to do that Jackie was talking about, you know, the singing and the dancing. It's generally a pretty good time, but it takes a lot of effort to keep that ship moving. We're creating lots of student-teacher centers. I think the new Scholastic program does a very good job with that. We're still in kind of the infant stages. I know Dr. Podesta referred to it as year zero, and it sure feels like that sometimes, but we are working really hard, and it sets itself up for success in the sense that moving from the whole-class instruction to more centers-based or transitioning through stations, there's more of an opportunity to do that small-group instruction. So when I'm pushing into a room, there's automatically another adult in there that can help transition through the students, and that's proven to be very helpful. So also, just kind of talking about some of the other strategies we use is double-dosing the foundations. That's our phonics program, and especially in the kindergarten, they're being exposed to English sounds and phonemes for the first time. So being able to come into my room and then get what we might call a double dose of that, it just really helps. And I might move sometimes at a different pace or sometimes attack it from a different angle. I'm still teaching the same exact things that is going on in the kindergarten classroom, but I'm coming at it from a different point of view. And at the very least, with this very smaller class size, someone who may be hesitant to communicate or voice or take a chance, especially with an accent or being misunderstood in that small group, they're much more prone to take chances and be positive academically successfully. We're co-planning with a lot of teachers. We try to do that. We have collaborative time scheduled for every morning. So we're constantly meeting with classroom teachers to see how we can support the Scholastic program. We're still working on that, but I think it's already going very well. And it's not just the ENL program, but the AAS program, too. All of that, of classroom teachers are doing everything that we can. We're meeting once weekly to discuss things, how we can help support not just the assessment, but also the administration of the day-to-day program. We take a look at the materials that they give, and this helps us a lot. Scholastic has kind of put this to us as well, in the sense that we're taking a look, everything is still so new to us, but we're asking ourselves, when we take a step back, what's the most important thing that we need the child to get out of this lesson? Or what are we looking to do? How does this line up with what we're trying to teach by the end of the year? So taking a look at the standards or the curriculum that is outlined in Scholastic, we can take a look at the overview and see, how can we best support the students throughout the course of the year or just throughout the study of a novel, which can become more and more intense as you go up through the grades into high school. The achievement gap is generally much smaller in the elementary school. It's hard to fall four or five years behind academically when you're only in second grade. But by the time you get to 10th or 11th grade, if you're especially new to the country, it's hard to make up that achievement gap while at the same time working on linguistic growth. So we're working to bridge the gap as best we can while at the same time sort of embracing the IB learner profile. So here's just some pictures we've seen. This is students using graphic novels as support. So you'll see certain novels, like, say, Animal Farm. There's lots of these available nowadays where the ENL teacher can take a book that might be above a student's reading level, but then break it down through lots and lots of pictures. And this is just one of the resources that are made available to us. And that's, again, really something great that's new about the Scholastic program, is there's such a technological component that isn't necessarily pushed in the classroom. It's utilized to its best of its ability, but some of these kids that might need second or third reads can go home and read this again on their own through their iPad or through their parents' iPhone or, you know, laptops that we provide them with. So this is just another opportunity for them to be exposed to literature that might be above their head. Oh, sorry. Some of the other things we're doing is books and materials in the native language, so quite often, those are made available. So you can, we're obviously using those whenever we can to help push students along, like the graphic novels we spoke about already and the graphic organizers and sentence starters.
So just a note about Something Like Persepolis, this is the book used in 11th grade IB ELA. And so to make that class accessible to all students, we now have a graphic novel available to use for our ENL students. That way, no student is prevented from accessing any class and doing any of the work that we are doing in all of the classes we offer.
And I think that's been one of the most successful parts of implementing the ENL methodologies into classroom instruction is that while we're striving, maybe sometimes specifically to support our ENL students, we each have our own caseloads, but the graphic organizers, the sentence starters, the graphic novels, all of these things are bringing equity and helping all of the students. So it's not just specifically tailored to help the ENL students, but teachers are seeing, especially through professional developments that they're receiving through us or the Arburn or anywhere else, that the way that we're framing the changes in the instructional practices is not just helping the ENL students, but having these graphic organizers allows us to differentiate instructions for all students that might need it in the classroom. Because in the end, the goal is, we want them to have a well-balanced academic understanding of the things that we're teaching, and that's much more possible through some of what we've learned over ENL methodology over the past 25 years. Student leaders, it's really something fantastic that we've been doing. You'll see this a lot at the middle school and high school level, and we had students like TJ who are just buddies to the kids that come into, like, say, Miss Canute's fourth-grade classroom. They're helpful all the time. So the new students are provided with multilingual tours by the current students. The ENL buddies are there to help answer questions across grade levels, and it's really nice. Our teachers are very compassionate in the sense that if someone is so new to the country, and I'm thinking of a second-grade student, there's someone else in the classroom who already speaks English and Spanish. So that student may have been granted a special privilege to consistently translate in real time, if I'm not in the classroom, to help that student understand what's going on. And, you know, these kinds of ENL buddies is really helping the support system push these kids and achieve academic success. Some of the other programs that we're encouraging the ENL students, and they are going and participating in include National Honor Society, the Math Honor Society, the Spanish Irish Society, a variety of the IB courses, Students Against Drunk Driving, Theater Works, The Big Buddies, Soccer, Cheerleading Baseball, Today's Students, Tomorrow's Teachers. And it's really great because I think the Putnam Valley community has been very accepting and welcoming of new students in, but that hesitancy of just being new can kind of keep you back sometimes. You just, it's scary at first to be in a new place and to learn new things, and I think our community does a great job of helping integrate that. And we're even having two ENL Seal of Bilinguacy recipients this year, so that's a really big deal, too. Julian Nelson, who works in the high school, has really been working hard with that over the past few years, and it's been great for the kids that graduate with that true certification of being bilingual. So when they're applying to college or for jobs, it's just a massive help, and it's been a great job. It's a long process, and it takes a lot of time on the teacher's part and on the students, but we're seeing some real success with that. And again, I had mentioned earlier how I was eventually going to talk about how we're not just working with the students in the school, but fostering community with families. And again, I just want to return to like what Dr. Doherty did a few years ago with some of the families during COVID was exceptional. I mean, the fact that we got together with the social and emotional, mental health in the Putnam Valley area, working with Cove Care, helping gas bills get paid, I mean, the fact that we go so above and beyond is amazing. And I think a lot of families that might have been hesitant to reach out a number of years ago are now reaching out, and we're there to help them, and we're helping a lot. And I think over the next couple of years, you're going to see us move more towards a community-based school system where we're going to be having more nights that are incorporating parents in. I mean, parents want to learn English that are coming from new countries, and some parents are interested in learning Spanish, too. So bringing these kind of intercultural exchanges together, it seems to be benefiting the Putnam Valley School District as a whole. And, you know, again, this is, it's still new. I come from a long time of working in the city, and it hasn't quite made it all the way up here yet. So the population is still growing, but it feels like just in the last four years, it's really kind of starting to spike. So I think if you looked over the past 10 years or so, you've seen a trend of, you know, we're only hiring ENL teachers where it's needed, and, you know, now we're up to five or six in the district. And the population continues to grow. So as the population continues to grow, we're going to need more teachers and more teaching practices to reach all of those kids. So some of these regulations that the state has put forth is, they're as new as 2015. And what's nice is we're not really playing catch-up, I think, and sometimes we're really proactive here in trying to help and reach out. Where we see a need, we'll immediately fill it and then say, "Oh, this worked for that one family." Well, let's have a whole bunch of families come in so that they know that they can, we're here for them as well. Things like parents calling into the school, we're translating materials, I think every single instance that we can. And if there's ever a need, I try as best I can to get these letters translated and sent out to help teachers, like when kids are brand-new. And I had a father ask me yesterday, "I want to make sure my child has everything that they need. Can you tell me what it is?" So I'll take a teacher's list of materials that they may need and translate that, speak to the parent on the phone, and they're really happy to establish those relationships. It helps the student, it helps the family, and it helps the teacher, too. And again, pushing the students to participate in extracurriculars because we do a great job with the Department of Transportation as well. So, you know, get shuffling kids to and from the Reading Academy that I worked on after school last year with Dr. Podesta. It seemed like a big task, but in very little time, we just had two buses, I think, that were able to take all of the kids home and drop them off, and everything went well. And again, just sort of to wrap it up, speaking again about the why that we do this is, you know, a few years ago when I started here, the big push was a growth mindset, and I think that we've really grapped onto that here in Putnam Valley, and we're always putting the child first. And when we think about one child, we're thinking about all of them. So as we continue to grow and new instructional practices come, Scholastic is new to us, but we're all working together, and as the test scores show, I mean, we're pushing in the right direction. And the kids, I think, seem pretty happy, and that's what matters most. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you guys have any questions, of course.
How many ENL students are receiving services, would you say, K-12, right now?
I would say it's right around 90 at this point.
Ninety?
Yeah. The numbers seem to be going up a little bit higher in the elementary school, just quicker, but I think that was kind of because in general, I can't really tell you why, but the families just seem to be moving here when the children are a little bit younger. But there's, as of now, 33 in the elementary school.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
And I believe that number was seven just a few years ago.
And in other school districts, you know, there's one ENL teacher that services the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, and generally, that's how these programs begin. But just in the time that I've been here, it's grown quite a bit, and I think through the professional development that we're offering, it's starting to very positively change what was already good teaching practice, but making it even better and more equitable for everybody.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, you know, I need the final word. So, Juan, I can't believe that you've only been here four years. It feels as if you've been part of the Putnam Valley community for many, many years, speaking specifically to Mr. Hogan now. And my quick little Mr. Hogan story is, I had the opportunity to meet with him, to offer him the position one evening, and I think we spent about an hour and a half talking, of which I left the room exhausted because Mr. Hogan spent that hour and a half interviewing me. My beliefs in the school district and what we believed and how we were going to ensure that all the students were supported and what we were going to do for him. So what a tremendous asset he and obviously his colleagues are to us, and it's, again, the happiest classroom and the happiest place on earth in the elementary school to go in there. And I won't tell the other story where you pointed out that the superintendent didn't sit around all day long. So thank you both very much for a very detailed presentation.
Yep.
By the way, you can't say happiest place on earth. That's trademarked.
Is it? Disney World?
Disney owns it. So now you got to pay them something.
Having a vacation.
All right, next on our agenda is the NISBA resolutions. I know Maureen sent out the new copies, and she left the copies here. We're going to talk about it at our meeting, our next meeting, October 13th. That's not our next meeting, but at our October 13th meeting. But did anybody have any questions or comments or anything I can answer tonight?
Well, there's two resolutions. Both are, no decision has been made. It's 16 and 20, and for me, I can't support either of those. One concerns asking the state to provide districts with the ability to give a stipend to the trustees. And the minute you make a position like this, a business position involving a monetary exchange, you lose the heart and soul of what we're supposed to be doing, and that is making sure that our children are educated at the best way possible. A stipend lessens the value of that position, I believe. Look, we can deduct as trustees, any travel expenses, part of our internet that we may use, any of that stuff, we can deduct off taxes.
Really?
And I think that's enough. Yeah, you can, as a trustee, believe it or not. Check to your account.
It's okay.
But to get a stipend, I think it removes the heart and soul of it.
And I agree, but I will, some of the background, this was proposed by the Beacon School District. They really feel that this is the only position that is not given any kind of a stipend. So it's like every other job in the state is important enough to get a monetary stipend, and this is not. So that's part of their argument. The other part is that some, that running for school board, you kind of have to be... I know. That it's discriminatory against people who are maybe a single parent, who can't get a babysitter, can't afford to get a babysitter, whatever, that it discriminates against people who may want to serve but can't due to financial constraints.
And you know how you can solve that problem? You ask some of your seniors who are interested in maybe a career in education to provide childcare so that the parent can attend while the child is being taken care of, and that would eliminate any need for a stipend. Some schools do that, actually, upstate, I know.
And this just really says that it would allow school board members to receive a stipend if they needed. But, you know, like, and I agree with you when we vote next time, but that was a good comment. And what was the other one, 20?
Number 20. We can't have the association become political.
This, number 20 said, just for the community that's listening, says, "NISBA supports legislation at the state and/or federal level that would reform the current gun laws to strengthen background checks, implementing red flag laws as well as laws that will restrict guns from those under the age of 21." So go ahead.
Yeah. Whatever a person's view on the Second Amendment might be, it's not for the association to decide these political issues. They need to stay with education. If they care about schools... If they care about school security, get the state to give us more money to fund increased security aspects within the building. But leave that Second Amendment issue alone. They're treading on very dangerous water, even mentioning it, even including it with this.
Right. And part of the discussion was, this is a societal issue, not necessarily a school district issue.
Exactly.
We can't solve those kind of issues by, I mean, NISBA does not support that kind of, it's kind of like not in their purview. So, the other one that people couldn't decide on was the supporting, NISBA supports adding fully state-funded arts and music education in a common school branch that should be incorporated into the public school curriculum. It's number one.
Yeah, I don't know what really that means.
To provide a more well-rounded educa, well, it's, the common school branch is reading, writing.
Right.
Social studies, math, science. If they added art and music as a common branch, it would have to be mandatory. We do it anyway, but not all districts do. But NISBA argues often at the state level for the state to stay out of curriculum issues unless we want them to not. So they kind of walk a fine line. And in the discussion with the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association, they, there were people on both sides. So they couldn't make a determination of how, of how to vote. So we'll decide that, how to vote, when we talk about them on the 13th. But those were good points.
I do wonder, again, what the practicalities is of number one, of the arts and music education piece. I mean, what that actually means in practice.
Right.
And whenever, you know, similar to number eight, I guess, or anything of the pre-K stuff, the idea of full funding or mandating it, or either one of those, what impact that has on everything else? Because you add, you know, there's not additional money that's going to go out there. You know, it's one thing to kind of mandate, in my mind, to mandate pre-K in every district and not have a tax cap. But to have a tax cap and do a mandate that will add, you know, add dozens and dozens, at least for us, of new students into our programs another year or two earlier, so that we become a 15-year program instead of a 13-year program. Just like the buses are an issue. I mean, it just feels like, where's that, where's that coming from? So those are things that kind of stand out to me as well on all these that are west.
And if you're curious, you know, the districts that submit these proposals, these resolutions, they put their rationale down and they're, it's that in the, you know, the larger booklet.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not even that clear.
Not clear, now I know.
And they've pared this down significantly from years past where there used to be a lot of detail in rationale and then, you know, even on the opposition side. So...
But if you have questions or concerns before the next meeting, when we talk about it, if you, if you want, we can, you know, give me a call and we can talk about it, so.
Good.
Okay. Dr. Luft, you're up.
Oh, it's right in front of me, sorry.
So this promises to be less exciting than the other presentations we've heard so far, but I'll do my best.
We're the pictures.
We're the children.
It's a promise, it wasn't going to be as exciting. So the first thing I want to talk about this evening is to share for the first time with the public what our proposed or draft goals are for the 22-23 school year. Just some background, this process begins during our administrative and board retreats, where individuals have, go through protocols, setting their own goals, and then looking for common themes throughout those goals. And then again, the board and our administrative colleagues have an opportunity to sort of redefine or revamp those into what we think makes sense. So this is what was produced during our last administrative team meeting, a collection of the work that has taken place since the end of the summer. So what our two goals are for this year, because I like to try to keep it as simple, is to aspire and empower. Now, aspire was originally development. Mrs. Levine was not having it, so we found a better word in aspire and everyone got behind that, so. So some of our aspirations for the upcoming school year is to identify and enhance effective systems that support student learning. And then we bulleted what some of those are. We want to continue our implementation of the multi-tier systems of support through our leadership team. We want to implement and evaluate our academic programs. We heard a lot tonight about our new ELA program in the elementary school. The middle school will talk about the middle years program. The high school will talk about the progress of their programs. And we want to make sure that we're providing them the support they need to be successful. And then ultimately, we want to continue to pursue greatness. We want everyone to know that we are not satisfied with the status quo and we will continue to do everything we can to enhance our instructional program. Our second goal under aspiration is to develop and implement communication strategies that engage community members. So this work started several years ago and has certainly been accelerated since Mrs. Levine has joined us in the issuance of newsletters, the re-establishment of our building-level steering committees, the creation of a district-wide advisory committee, which primary goal last year was communications. Working with our community partners, including the PCA and the Putnam Valley Education Foundation. We've heard this evening about some parent evenings, work we're doing around social media, website, and mobile apps to improve our communications. And the final aspiration is to emphasize the importance of personal and professional growth. We're going to do this through professional development, through time we have faculty, department, and grade-level meetings, encourage personal goal-setting, and continuing to be future-focused, again, speaking to the sense of avoiding complacency. Our second theme for the year is empowerment. So we want to empower individuals to pursue opportunities for leadership roles. So that includes teacher leadership positions, opportunities to facilitate professional learning for your colleagues, participation on committees, opportunities to become turnkey trainers, and this idea of leadership for all. It's inherent in the role of any educator that you are, in a sense, a leader in your classroom and to model the best practices to those individuals either visiting or in your classroom every day to show and demonstrate the leadership potential you have. Our second is to promote a positive school climate and culture. Ways we can do that are being present at events, music, arts, athletics, and academics, making sure we take the time to let our colleagues know how valued they are, building relationships with students and adults, participation in school activities, team building, and opening honest discussions and collaborative problem-solving. We want individuals who are not fearful of bringing a concern to our attention, but also individuals who are willing to be part of the problem-solving process or solution-seeking. And our final one is access to a wide range of learning opportunities and spaces. We want individuals to embrace different learning styles. We want everyone to consider experiential learning opportunities, including field trips, virtual experiences, and our outdoor learning spaces. We want individuals to strive to connect with community partners and we want to make sure everyone is encouraged to pursue innovation and risk-taking in their instruction. And that is our draft goals under the theme of aspire and empower for the 22-23 school year. Any questions regarding those?
I'd like to just bullet points in that, you know, we've gone back and forth as far as having 75-page goal document to a two-page goal document that had like four words on it to kind of finding a happy medium here. And besides, obviously, design and structure, I like the fact, how much is and what is in there for us to discuss further before we adopt it.
Any other questions, comments? That's good. No, I know it's not the first time you guys have seen it, so.
I agree that I like aspire better than development.
I was hung up on that.
So it's a win for Levine. I also liked it better.
To the point.
Okay. So I'm just, while I'm here, I will continue on my update for the board. It's pretty quick. So we've, our back-to-school evenings, so our elementary school and our middle school have hosted their back-to-school evenings. The high school one is scheduled for 9:29, so it's coming up. Each has been very well attended. Parent feedback has been extremely positive and there is generally a sense of renewed energy within the buildings, not just in the students here, but also when the parents are coming back. I've had the opportunity to attend some meetings over the past week. The Lower Hudson Council School Superintendent's Meeting, where we honored newly-appointed and also acknowledged recently-retired superintendents. There was some discussion regarding a recently released report on superintendents in the area. It's a pretty astounding number, 56 of the 100 area superintendents have been on their job for two years or less. So 44% of superintendents in the larger area of Lower Hudson have been on their job for longer than two school years. There's been a lot of conversation regarding the substantial equivalency priorities set forth by the Board of Regents. And while that doesn't necessarily have any direct implications here in Putnam Valley, because we don't have any private parochial schools within our territory, certainly very concerning for many districts who do. We are proud to announce the valedictorian and salutatorian dinner will be returned for the first time in several years, so that is scheduled for May 24th. Myself, Ms. Parmley, and Mr. Mello will be invited to join our valedictorian and salutatorian for dinner. And we discussed the legislative priorities for the upcoming school year, and I know that's something that Barbara and some other board members are involved with. I attended the Lower Hudson Council, sorry, the New York State Council of School Superintendent's Fall Conference. Some of the topics that resonated with me throughout the conference were the idea of global competence and the direct connections to the IB learner profile. Legislative priorities, one included changes to the red flag law, update from the Commissioner of Education, and getting to meet the New York State Teacher and Superintendent of the Year. And I must say, what a powerful speech was given by William, Billy Green, who is the New York State Teacher of the Year, a chemistry teacher out of New York City, and had the entire room in the palm of his hands. So, very impressive. We had our monthly administrative meeting, where we did inter-reliability training. We're working out a whom-to-contact document, so that's something that we'll be sharing with our district advisory committee. That was a takeaway from our work last year. Essentially, it's a flow chart with a variety of issues. And say, if you have an issue regarding a classroom, this is who you contact first, this is who you contact second, this is who you contact third, and then a directory of how and who to contact or how to reach each of those individuals. So it's something that we're looking to polish up, we're going to share with our parents or our district advisory committee, and then certainly present it at a board meeting for public review. And we shared a variety of curriculum and HR updates, including our content for newsletters, FMLA, attendance policies, DASSA, among others. Couple of quick announcements, our flu clinics, the elementary school one is scheduled for 9:28, which is a Wednesday, and the middle school, high school one is scheduled for 9:30, which is the Friday. Reminder, 9:26 and 9:27, schools are closed for Rosh Hashanah. And that's it. Thank you very much. Questions? Everybody looks a little tired at this point. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, new business.
When do we get students? Sorry. When do we get student reps?
It's a good idea. Good question.
I will get that answered to you.
Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead.
Well, Mr. Hogan was sitting there when I first came in. I said, oh, you're our new stu-
[laughing]
No.
All right. Resolved the recommendation of superintendent schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Don Diario from the district effective close of business September 15, 2022, as per Document 8623 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved to accept the fiscal year ending June 2022 external audit report as presented to the board at this meeting, including extra classroom activity funds completed by PVFK O'Connor-Davies, the independent auditors for the district, and the district response corrective action plan management and representation letters for the fiscal year ending June 2022 as per Document 85/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved to nominate Cheryl Brady as a candidate for the New York State School Board Association's Area 10 Director vacancy.
Second. Questions or comments? Okay, I'm glad we're doing this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Okay, upcoming topics or presentations?
So our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, October 13th. That'll be our middle school, opening of schools report, along with the middle years program update. Following that is Tuesday, October 25th. That's the board meeting that was moved from Thursday to Tuesday. That'll be our high school, opening of schools report, as well as an athletics update by Mr. Kantrowitz. And Thursday, November 17th is our buildings and grounds and our technology update. And then the next one following that will likely be, I think it's the first meeting in December, will be our special education, PPS. And I'm sure others will be added along the way. We're trying to schedule one with our architects to come in and to talk about some of the projects that I had identified as areas to explore later or during the summer. So that's some work that's going on behind the scenes, just mapping out what that work may or could look like to decide how to best move forward. So that's something that, once it's all set, we would certainly like to invite them in to have a discussion.
One thing, and it may be part of the high school update, is I'd like to hear a community service update at the beginning of the year, so we have it all laid out for the remainder.
Sure, that'll be covered.
Okay, anything else? All right, I'm going to open up to the public, our public of two, for any comment on any topic?
These are, the agenda's not exactly right, they're flipped, and we don't have a board conversation.
Well, I was going to put that in there.
I'm just saying, for future, the agenda, that should have been before, so, anyway, doesn't matter.
Well, public comment would come first, right?
Public comment would come before...
Board conversation.
Upcoming topics. And then we would go into board conversation. We always have that buffer, but there's nobody here, so we don't have that buffer, but that's...
Well, there are people here.
Well, sorry. I don't, they don't, do not look like they're anxious to get up to the podium and speak.
But I want to acknowledge that there are people out there.
And we appreciate it.
And we appreciate it. Okay, so board comments, any? I mean, I have a list, but I can go last. Or first, okay.
Start.
So I was glad to see on the consent agenda that we, let me go back, that we appointed the policy committee. Natalie Doherty and I have spoken, well, like, we started three years ago, saying, we really need to go through our policies. Yes, we're going to do that. And then we didn't, and then COVID hit, and then we didn't, and then we didn't again. So I'm glad to see that we've got a policy committee. Sam and Helen are going to serve as the board reps on the, on the policy. Sam and Helen are going to serve as the board reps on the, on the policy committee. And my understanding is this is board policy. So this is going to be determined by the board and the administration that are sitting on the committee. And I've talked to Natalie before about where we start with this committee. The 1,000-
Actually, it's the, believe it or not, there's a zero, 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 there's a zero policy, so that's where it starts. So I'm going to suggest that we start at the 1,000 series, because right now, there's a lot of work being done on the mission, vision, and those, and that is in the first, in zeros. So I would suggest that we start at the 1,000s.
Okay.
And then just work our way down through all of the policies. Again, it's a really, it's quite a large undertaking. Obviously, everything is under the direction of Dr. Luft and the Board of Education, but the committee itself will function to review that. We do public readings on these policies. Everything is transparent as we go through them. Each policy that's adopted is read.
And all the policies are on the website. So if you know that we're going to go through the thousands, the policies that start with 1,001, or whatever, if any member of the community has issues, suggestions about those policies, they are welcome to send those issues to Dr. Luft. If you didn't know, this was, this is another one of the jobs, your job.
We need a separate mailbox for that.
And then he would bring them to the committee. So public input, you will also get input when we read them aloud, if we talk about them in public. But if you have issues or information about any of the policies, but since we're going to start with the thousands, I wouldn't jump to the 4,000s, because we're not going to probably get there this year. You are certainly, the community is certainly welcome to add their ideas. Okay. That's that. So coming up, I have a Westchester-Putnam School Boards Association meeting on the 29th, but that's also high school back-to-school night. I went to the middle school back-to-school night, it was great. It was nice to see teachers who I've only met here, you know, when they're appointed, like, present their stuff, what they teach, and see their enthusiasm. So it was, it was nice. The new, Mr. McCarty was enthusiastic, the Ms. Zeca, Zeca?
Zeca.
Also, there were a lot of people that were glad to meet her, so it was a really nice thing. So if, you know, if you're free, I think it's a good thing, if you could go to the back-to-school nights. There's a roundtable, West Putt has got, they've scheduled a roundtable, Ready, Steady, Go, on the 3rd of October. It's dinner prepared by the students of the Southern Westchester Bosse's, I think. And the roundtable discussions are about budgeting. So I'm going. If anybody wants to go, you have to register through the district office. And, you know, I'm willing, you know, to ride with somebody, or let them drive, or I'll drive, but I'm going, anyway. So that's on the 3rd. I guess that's it. Coming up, okay. Anything else? I asked Jeanette, I had sent all of you that brochure about the board operations kind of like. I'd really like to talk about doing something like that. So I'm going to send, I'll send another copy to Jeanette and get some input. I know Joe said, the graphics are terrible. So he's on the graphic committee? He doesn't know that, but he's objecting, he just made himself the graphics committee.
I don't know if that was an objection more than an observation, but that's okay.
That's okay. You will do it better than I. He wouldn't like mine either, so. Actually, we could ask Ms. Levine to help us. She's done great stuff with graphics. Anyway, so that's, that's it for me. Anything else? Anybody else? Jeanette, you want to talk a little bit about the meeting we were at the other night, or the community conversations that West Putt scheduled?
Well, Barbara had a lot of good conversations in there, so I'll let Barbara speak to it. But it was, I just think their forums are very informative. It's great to hear what other boards are doing and thinking about, and it's nice to know we're not, first, I think we're ahead of a lot of them.
Right.
But it's nice to know we're not on the ledge by ourselves sometimes, so.
I agree.
A lot of social, emotional, learning activities that other districts are doing, that I think we could learn from also.
Yeah, I would agree. There are a lot of restorative circles, kind of the things, Jeremy, that you did with the advisory committee. They're just starting those, a lot of parent university and workshops to get parents in, which I see that we're doing. A lot of the things that I thought were great ideas, we are doing, or we're building on things that we've done before. So I thought they were good. Anyway, so I thought it was, it was good. It was a good thing, so. All right, I'd like a motion to convene to executive session.
So moved.
So we're resolved to convene an executive session for one matter of collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law, the Taylor Law, and one matter that may lead to legal action. Do you have a second?
Second.
There will be no board business conducted afterwards.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good night, people.
Happy fall.
Yep, happy fall.
And thank you, guys, truly.